So we will get started with the candidates form for the school board. I want to welcome all the candidates and everyone in the audience today. Since we do have a couple of new people for this forum, we just want to let everyone know that the forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization and it encourages informed and active participation in government and works to increase understanding of major public policy issues and influence public policy through education and advocacy. We do want to thank City Hall for allowing us to use the chambers and just remind everyone and the candidates that the forum will be rebroadcast on Fargo Channel 12. For the format, each candidate will get a two-minute introduction and then we'll start with the questions and each candidate will get two minutes to answer each question and then a one-minute wrap-up. And because we do have two sections of school board, we are going to use the same questions for each group. So for those of you in the audience, if you have questions for the school board, get them in for this first group because we won't be adding any new questions for the second group. All right, and then for our introductions, we will, Scott, start with Scott.
Okay, well, here goes. Good morning. Sit down. I thought I was a little bit more noticeable up there. All right, thank you. First off, thank you everyone for joining us on Saturday morning. League of Women Voters, thank you for having this forum. A little bit of introduction on myself. I have, I'm a family man. I am married to my wife Shannon. I have two small boys, William who is two and Maxwell who is four. A little history on myself, I was born and raised in Fargo. I went to school at Nativity, went to Agassi Junior High School and then went and graduated from Fargo South High School in 1992. I took a little sabbatical, went out west, came back and attended NDSU and got degrees in architectural, in architecture and environmental science. I come from a family that we are all, it's very important, community service is very important and that's one of the things why I'm doing this. A little bit of my experience, why I think this position is good for me, is I run two, I run two successful businesses, a design-build contracting business and an aging-in-place universal design business. I have over nine years of architectural firm experience, which gives me experience with school buildings. I have worked with, on the Jefferson School Building and I have worked in, a little bit on the Davies School Building, so I know from a contracting standpoint what it takes to get those buildings built. I value education, families and the older neighborhoods and, and the community as a whole. I do, I do believe I have a certain set of skills that will complement the, the team that consists of the Fargo School Board and I, excuse me, I'm, I have the ability to think rationally and creatively, that's what my business consists of, and I know the value of a dollar and what it takes to earn that dollar. So, and with that, that kind of wraps up what I'm about. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott Dums. Next will be Teri Lee James.
First of all, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for having us here today and all of you for being here. I am Dr. Teri Lee James and I'm running for Fargo School Board because I believe excellence in education is a key factor to our community's continued success and prosperity. Some of you may realize by listening to me speak for the past few seconds that unlike a lot of people here, I was not born in Fargo. I moved here from Tennessee with my husband and our then-two-year-old daughter. We chose Fargo because of job opportunities, because we do have some family here, but mostly because this is a place that we wanted to be a part of and a place that we wanted to call our home. In our five years here, we have become contributing members of our community. I opened a small business, a veterinary practice, that I run with my business owner and our nine staff. I have served as an officer in local community, political and professional organizations and I volunteer in my daughter's school and extracurricular functions. My husband is a teacher in Fargo Public Schools and is on the Board of Audubon, Dakota, and our daughter attends first grade at Hawthorne Elementary where she is currently getting an excellent education. However, as a parent of one of our youngest students, I am concerned about the future of that education. Our community is growing, our student population is becoming more diverse and educational standards are becoming more rigorous. I welcome the diversity. It gives our students a unique opportunity to develop cultural competency which they will need to be successful as adults in an ever-changing global society. I welcome rigorous educational standards. We should always hold our students and ourselves for that matter to the highest standards and continue to encourage them to strive for excellence. But to make these changes work for our schools, we need proactive, forward-thinking leaders who are capable of managing resources wisely, to ensure that all students have access to appropriate and high-quality education and who have a vested interest in the future of Fargo. I am one of these leaders and I look forward to serving our students and our community as a member of the Fargo School Board.
Thank you, Teri Lee James. Next will be Rebecca Knutson.
Good morning. Thank you to the League for hosting this forum. My name is Rebecca Knutson and I am happy to be a candidate for the Fargo School Board. Welcome to those in the audience and those listening at home and those that will be watching the rebroadcast. It is fair to say that every one of us had a teacher in our lives that had an impact on us along the way. Whether that be through the public school system, private school, a piano teacher, a counselor or a mentor, teachers have been an important part in our lives and will continue to be because education and learning is ongoing. Fargo is a special place to live, work and go to school. I am committed to furthering the process of public engagement and being a good steward of your tax dollars while helping to ensure academic excellence. A bit about me, I'm married, a homeowner and a parent of three children in Fargo Public Schools. I have twin daughters, they're in the fourth grade at Clara Barton, and I have a son, he is a sophomore at Fargo South. He also attended Carl Bend for three years. We have an excellent public school system and we've just enjoyed the teachers and the staff tremendously. Our family lives in the Clara Barton and Hawthorne neighborhood. You'll know that a few of us running share that neighborhood and we're happy to call that neighborhood home. I've been active in both of those neighborhood associations. I'm a graduate of NDSU with a Bachelor of Arts in Mass Communications. In our community, you won't always see me dressed in a suit. Next weekend I'll be running the Fargo Marathon, so you'll see me oftentimes in a cap and my running gear and you'll probably see me at a hockey game in a parka and boots trying to stay warm, watching my kids play their winter sports. My interest in issues relating to Fargo schools was sparked through my involvement in PTA and also by serving as a community member on the Fargo Public Schools Long Range Facility Task Force. While on the task force, I showed sensitivity to balancing the multiple needs of our growing population while encouraging efficient and effective management of our district's assets. I pushed for ongoing maintenance of our core elementary schools and addressed the issues of overcrowding in schools such as Kennedy and Lewis and Clark. I work to form with others the Alliance for Neighborhood Schools, a citizens' group that provides the value and the current of future elementary schools in Fargo as current and, as current solutions to neighborhood vitality. I look forward to hearing your concerns today and for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca Knutson. Next will be Jennifer Benson.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for allowing us the opportunity to share a little bit about ourselves and thank you all for coming. First and foremost, I believe education is the foundation to a strong community. If you vote for me to serve as one of the next Fargo School Board members, I would work to promote fiscal responsibility while maintaining a high quality of education for all students. I believe in supporting small class sizes. I also believe in protecting neighborhood schools. I believe in ensuring a supportive work environment for our teachers and I also believe in encouraging the engagement of the community. A little bit about me, I was raised in the Fargo Public School System. I attended Longfellow Elementary, then Ben Franklin Junior High and graduated from Fargo North High. I earned my bachelor's degree from MSUM in Communications and I have been working for a division of Johnson &amp; Johnson Companies for over 13 years. I've been married for 14 years and I have three little children, ages 10, eight and five. Having young children attending Fargo Public Schools has allowed me the opportunity to hear firsthand from students, parents, teachers and administrators. This paired with my business acumen would allow me to bring a valuable perspective to the board. I served as a, as a member of the Community Long Range Task Force for Fargo Public Schools last year. I organized the drive to create the Kennedy Neighborhood Association and I am an active PTA member. I will work to understand the views from all sides. I feel it is my obligation to bring solution-oriented ideas to the table and challenge the status quo when necessary. I am passionate about many things and I sincerely welcome the opportunity to serve the students as well as the community as an elected member of the Fargo School Board.
Thank you, Jennifer Benson. Next will be Dinah Goldenberg.
Good morning and thank you to the League also for hosting us today and for everyone to come, coming out. My name is Dinah Goldenberg. I am a devoted volunteer in our community. My current positions include Chair of the Fargo CAS Public Health Board, a member of the Sanford Ethics Committee and a member of the North Dakota Task Force on Advanced Care Planning. Some of my past roles include membership on the Gooseberry Park Players Board, the American Medical Association Foundation, as well as the Treasurer of Temple Beth El. It has been my privilege and honor to serve the community as a member of the Fargo School Board for the last eight years. Currently, I serve as the School Board President. During my tenure, I have worked hard to make well-informed decisions. My open-door policy has allowed me the opportunity to visit with teachers, administrators, support staff, students and the general public on a wide variety of issues. I have spent many hours visiting our schools in order to see how the Board's decisions impact the day-to-day activities of the district. Education is a fundamental right for all children and is the foundation of a thriving community. If re-elected, I pledge to continue support for diverse and challenging educational and extracurricular opportunities for all Fargo Public School students while advocating for effective and efficient use of school funds. I hope to persuade you over the next hour that a vote for Dinah Goldenberg is a vote for experience and continued educational excellence for all of Fargo students.
Thank you, Dinah Goldenberg. And now for the questions, we will start with Teri Lee James and then the next question we'll start with Rebecca Knutson and just so on down. The first question, since many of you even in your introduction mentioned your passion for preserving neighborhood schools, someone asked what you would do as part of the Fargo School Board to preserve neighborhood schools and is there anything that the citizens of Fargo can do to preserve their neighborhood schools? Teri Lee.
Thank you. Well, first of all, when we moved to Fargo five years ago, one of the main reasons we moved here is so that our daughter could attend a neighborhood school. Where I grew up, schools typically, I don't think I ever went to a school that was really within walking distance of my house. If I did, there were no sidewalks for me to walk on to get to school. So that was something that really was wonderful for us when we moved here is to see the neighborhoods, to see the neighborhood involvement in the schools and, you know, so part of that I think is getting other young families to become passionate about that, to come to Fargo. Right now, about 75% of Fargo voters don't have children that attend school. So I think in order to preserve those, we need to make Fargo an attractive place for those younger families who, like my husband and I, wanted to come here to make this our home. One of the ways we can do that is by continuing to offer excellent public education. That is one of the driving factors for young families to move here, I think, as well as job opportunities. And, you know, those safe, safe schools, I heard some of the candidates earlier kind of talking about the same thing. I think as voters, talking about the, the wonderful education that Fargo can offer, getting people kind of engaged in those schools, I know there's lots of activities that occur at the schools, getting maybe those people who don't have children to come into the schools and see what's going on there. I think part of that, and this has come up recently, is that people look at that kind of as an expense, you know, they look at, well, we've got all these little schools, do we need to, you know, build bigger schools, bus kids in, maybe this is a better value for our dollar. And I don't, I don't think that's true because I think what we're going to see is that people are going to move out of the neighborhoods, maybe go somewhere where they can still, still get those neighborhood schools. So I think looking at that, looking at ways we can manage our resources in support of the neighborhood schools while still being fiscally responsible to ensure that all of our children are able to get that quality education. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Okay. Well, the Alliance for Neighborhood Schools is an organization that was formed about half a year ago and it was directly formed to help address the issue of, or the threat that potentially some of our neighborhood schools in Fargo would be closed and there were folks from Roosevelt, Horace Mann, Hawthorne, Clara Barton, McKinley and Madison that joined that group and I would say, one of the, one of the questions was how can people be involved? One of the ways that folks could be involved and learn more about the benefits of neighborhood schools would be to be involved in that type of an organization and, and that organization certainly can grow. Neighborhood schools don't need to only exist in existing or in our older neighborhoods, which I think is what some might think. Your home doesn't need to be built in 1800s or the 1900s to have a neighborhood school in your area. And we can look at the, the plans for building the school at Ed Clapp Park, which will be a neighborhood school. It will be a little larger than some of the schools that we have now in terms of Clara Barton and Hawthorne, but it's designed to really serve that, that neighborhood that surrounds it. And so there, there is so much research that shows that if, if a child can walk or bike or skateboard to school, that, you know, they, they're ready to learn once, when they're there rather than sitting on a bus. Lots of neighborhood schools, of course, focus on small class sizes, but that is also something that we have in Fargo. Even if we have schools that are larger, we have small class sizes in Fargo. So I think we need to make sure that we understand that the idea of a neighborhood school, define what a neighborhood school is to Fargo. Does that mean that you can ideally walk to your school or not? And we certainly need to offer diversity in Fargo because with our growing community, with our small, small businesses and large employers, folks that are coming into Fargo are demanding difference, differences. They, they want options in terms of where they're going to live and where they're going to send their kids to school. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer?
So as my experience on the Long Range Facility Task Force, it was clear to me that this community supports neighborhood schools for multiple reasons and I'm from the south side, well, I'm from the north side, but I currently live on the south side. And one of the challenges we were facing at Kennedy was that it was overcrowded. We had 750 kids and so I began reading about the impact of what that means for our kids first and foremost, as well as the neighborhoods and parent involvement and, you know, all the data suggests out there that supersized schools are not the, the best situation for kids and, and, you know, parents and neighborhoods. So having said that, clearly this is why I support smaller class sizes, smaller schools and this community has always been an advocate for that as well. But my point is that the data also supports this. I want to say also that I think that this is, you know, something good for property values and, you know, what is the first question then when we're looking for a home is where is the closest school going to be? We know that with smaller schools, we can provide better individualized attention. It increases parent involvement in my experience and you get that real neighborhood sense of community. So this would be the, all the reasons why I would support smaller schools in both north and south side of Fargo and middle.
Thank you. Out to Dinah.
Well, as a current school board member, I think I've demonstrated support for neighborhood schools with the Board when we, in our last long-range facility plan, we listened to all of our patrons and our advice and we kept all of the schools open. Where air conditioning, our six buildings that don't have air conditioning. We also continue to work with our partners in the city and the park districts to do what we can to help revitalize neighborhoods. We all know there's a cyclic nature in neighborhoods and currently we have enough buildings with enough spots for the number of kids that we have in the district. There's a misconception out there that we have, some of our north side schools are not full. They're not all the same size, but the size is accommodated by the number of kids that live there now. Our hope is that some of these neighborhoods will start to turn over and we will have more and more kids and then we'll have a different problem. We've also demonstrated the neighborhood school piece by supporting the building of the newest school in the Ed Clapp Park area. Bluemont Lakes was, and the broader area there just somehow never had a, a school. And one other thing we're trying to do is talk with future developers in future neighborhoods so that we can talk about where the best place for schools are in the future as opposed to building a school and they will come, hoping that the school will be part of the planning in a future development. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next to Scott.
You know, when I, when I grew up in this community, I didn't always value my, my education. It took me a long time after moving away to come back and, and see what kind of value that, growing up in a neighborhood, that I was able to walk to school, buying, buying a home and being able to walk, walk to that school with my kids who don't even go to that school but still use the playgrounds. I want to express to people that, you know, neighborhood schools and, and having, it shouldn't always just be about dollars and cents. We have to start talking about what the, the value is we have in this as, as making neighborhoods, self-sufficient neighborhoods that create good communities, that create a, a well, I'm not, I'm not the best speaker, but it's just like, it's to make a, a nice place to live. And, you know, I, I think what we need to do is start thinking about options in terms of, you know, what it takes to, to make these schools feasible, these neighborhood schools feasible. There's certainly ways to make them, to be creative and look at ways of spending dollars and cents to get these schools to, to function right, to function at a certain level. And I do believe that it, it's really easy to be a reactive society. I think we need to be proactive in terms of looking at other neighborhoods. There's neighborhoods on the, on the north side, there's neighborhoods out west and that, that are kind of underutilized and they don't, they don't, they have resources there that are untapped and as infill happens in these other neighborhoods, there's opportunities in these, in these other neighborhoods to, to kind of keep, keep the, the flow going. And I think we just have to look at that and, and, you know, be a proactive society on that.
Great, thank you. So our next question, we'll start with Rebecca. What is your view on how many standardized tests our students take during the year?
Well, testing to a certain point, I think, can be overrated. We have kids coming to us at different levels as they enter their kindergarten years and to measuring them all at the same level is, is a bit scary. I want to talk a little bit about Common Core. The concepts of Common Core are being implemented currently by the Superintendent of Public Instruction based on standards that have been set for North Dakota by the legislature under guidance with the School Board and members and teachers. Common Core isn't a curriculum that the district buys into, but it provides some guidance, it provides a set of standards for teachers to teach to. And after discussions that I've had with teachers, it, it, it sounds like it's, it's obviously a start, there's room for improvement. Some of the testing outcomes, their outcomes are standardized, but the, but the ways to get to those outcomes need to be further defined. When kids come to our, us in kindergarten and they have a word level or in their bank of anywhere from, you know, say under 1,500 to 2,000 words comparison to others that have more, there's a lot of catch-up time there. We need to look into what we're going to be doing in the future for pre-K potentially within our education system here in Fargo and how we want to make sure that children with learning disabilities are taken care of within our system and how the measurements are in terms of, are we measuring children with disabilities and, and disadvantages at the same level as, as those maybe that come to us with a higher word bank? So the question was about testing and testing is important. We need to understand and have some kind of measurements in regards to the levels that our children are learning and obviously hold teachers accountable. But we also have to realize that kids are coming to us at many, many different levels in their lives and we need to figure out how to adjust to that when teach, teaching them and testing them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to Jennifer.
So my view on how many standardized tests our kids take. As a parent of three kids, I know that that has crossed my mind often when they come home and share their experience. There's another test happening, another test happening and, you know, unfortunately, that is one good way to measure our progress and to make sure that all of the students, that we are, you know, giving them the tools needed and that they are meeting the standards that are required. I do know that I've heard in participating in many of the school board meetings, I've heard many discussions on ways or sharing of ideas on other ways that this could possibly be done because I think teachers are often saying, including the teachers in my family, I wish we didn't have to give so many tests. So I think that, you know, the Board does a good job of, of recognizing that that is something that they would like to see maybe different within the classroom as far as from a teacher's perspective. And, you know, I welcome that discussion and, and looking for other ways to, to maybe pare that down a bit.
Thank you. To Dinah.
Ooh, not a simple question to answer in two minutes, but some comments. First of all, as you all probably know, many of our standardized tests come from above. They're mandated by the state or the federal government. Our experts in our department are always looking at these standardized tests and working with folks to try and modify them, make them best for the students in the district, not only if they have special needs, but some kids, you know, need special accommodations when they're doing standardized tests. We're always working towards, well, is this too much or not enough? But Fargo is a standard-based curriculum. Aside from the Common Core, I know there's a lot of discussion out there of Common Core, but Fargo is always a standard-based system regardless. And testing has changed over time. I'm sure that most of the people, well, at least me, when I went to school, it was pen and paper tests and that was it. Teachers and educators have figured out ways to test kids on a daily basis in a much more interactive way that show that maybe those results are better than some of the standardized tests or at least are complementary to those. So I think we as a district, our experts, our educational experts are working with the higher-up folks who are mandating these things to always improve the quality of the testing and reduce the frequency so that teachers can spend more time teaching and less time testing on standardized tests. Thank you.
Thank you. To Scott.
Well, I have to be completely honest here. I have no idea how many standardized tests that a student gets every year. I do know that looking at my upbringing, I was kind of a more of a vocational, hands-on type person. I look at my own boys and I, I believe that that's probably going to be the route that they're taking just because of the influence that I have over their life. So, to be completely honest, I never liked the standardized tests that I took. I was, I barely passed high school, but I've, I've been extremely successful because of the, because of the people that have been there and persistent with me and persistent with what they saw in me. And I, I believe that, you know, tests aren't necessarily the way to judge the, the way a person's going to learn in, in the traditional sense. We look, we look at the way schools are set up right now and it's kind of based off of, of a, of a factory setting where people all, they move in chunks. They, they kind of start at one task, they all go and they started another task and then they complete that and go and I find it difficult to, I find it real difficult that, that kids are kind of grouped in that sense and that they, they, they're not allowed to, and, and I know that they do, are allowed to kind of individually get, take the next steps to keep their education going. But in terms of standardized tests, I haven't taken the ones that the kids are taking these days. I do know that the ones that I took, I never liked and I, and as a kid, of course, you don't like them, but they never really, they never really told anything about me that I ended up being successful later on. And I just look at what, you know what, maybe what could have been had, had they been the right format.
Thank you. Teri Lee.
So with standardized tests, I grew up in
So with standardized tests, I grew up in a house full of teachers. I live with a teacher now still. So there's a lot of discussion about this. What I remember from taking a standardized test is about the week before the test, the teacher started teaching us how to take the test to make sure that we were prepared. And that right there is, is the problem. The tests are not always reflective, and I think all of us have touched on this and, and would probably agree to this to some extent. The tests are not always reflective of what our children need to be learning. The tests are over here and then what our kids are learning are here and there's sometimes a disconnect between those things. So what we need to look at is what standards are we holding our students to? You know, whether they be the Common Core standards that are now adopted in the Fargo public schools, whether there's some other set of standards. Are they appropriate? Is this what is going to make our kids successful, not only through their, their educational career, but in their vocational careers outside as adults? If that is the case, then we need to then go to the tests and make sure that those tests are testing them on those things. Making sure that the tests are reflective of the education they're getting and not using the tests as punishment to say, this kid isn't doing well, this teacher isn't doing well. We need to be utilizing those tests to say, where are we falling short? Where are our students falling short? Where are our teachers falling short? And how are we going to fix that? Because we need to hold our students accountable, we need to hold our teachers accountable. But all the pieces have to come together and mesh appropriately. And that's what I have to say about standardized tests. Thank you.
Thank you. So our next question, we'll start with Jennifer. And the question is, does Fargo spend too much time and resources on sports?
That's a fine question and I don't know that I have an answer to that. I guess I would have to hear people's opinions from both sides of the aisle in order to form one of my own. My kids are in sports and participate in activities, but most of them at the elementary age at this point are outside of school. They're gymnasts and, and so, you know, and basketball yet isn't sort of an organized thing at the elementary level. I did some sports, I guess, growing up in Fargo at the high school level, but that was when the parents were paying the bills, right? So, I, I, I don't ever think, and I truly believe and my parents believed that if you keep your kids busy and guided and directed in positive things like sports, this can never be a bad thing. So I believe, this is how you keep your kids guided and out of trouble. So do I support activities and the options for activities for, for kids in school? Absolutely. Could we take a look at costs? Perhaps.
All right. Thank you. To Dinah.
Okay, so sports aren't the only extracurricular activity that are offered by the school district. So let's talk about extracurricular activities as a whole. Do we spend too much on extracurricular activities? And that's everything from our music to our theater to our DECA club, to our speech club, to the croquet club or the froth, you know, some of these new things that weren't around when we were kids. Fargo has a, a, an expectation or a hope to work towards ninety percent of our students being involved in some form of extracurricular activity. We all know that every kid doesn't want to play sports, not every kid wants to do music, but hopefully we offer something for every kid over the course of time that they will find a passion and an interest outside of their academics because it works for a more well-rounded student. Are we spending too much over, on the whole? I think in the last few years since we hired a new activities coordinator, we have looked really carefully at every piece that, that goes into that budget and we have reduced it and we're looking at right sizing everything. But it's hard to say, well, let's take away this, then we don't have the opportunities for all these ninety percent of the kids that we want to be involved in extracurriculars. But I think every day our admin, or I should say, at least every year as we review our budgets, we are looking at ways that we can tighten our belts, that we can right-size our operation with still offering as much as we can in a wide variety of extracurricular activities.
Thank you. To Scott.
Yes, is my answer. And that's not to say that we, we can't be creative and look at the funds. I don't know the number that's being spent in, but as an, as an outsider and as someone who reads a paper and, you know, as an educated person, it appears to me that there is probably too much money and emphasis spent on sports. You know, I, I believe we can look, look at the bottom lines. I think we can be creative and maybe get the same results. It just, it appears, it, it just seems to me that you can, you know, I'm not, I'm not a numbers guy, but it, it seems like budgets are sent, are, are set based on needs and not, or based on wants and not needs. And, and I just believe that there's a, a different way to look at those things and sit down and say, okay, if we need X amount of dollars to fulfill these certain needs for this certain activity, let's break that down a little bit further and, and say, okay, where can we, where can we save a little bit of money here, a little bit of resources here and here? Take baby steps through the process and make, make sure that we can not spend so much money and then fund something different or take that money and put it back into the coffers. I mean, my expertise doesn't come in, in numbers, it doesn't come in education. It, it, it's all in trying to be creative and being a rational thinker in terms of what we do with the money we have and, and move forward and give the community and give our kids the best education and experience possible. Thank you.
Thank you. To Teri Lee.
Thank you. So my answer to this question actually has probably changed over the past few years. Growing up, I wasn't real active in sports, I was more into the music drama thing. And I always remember kind of feeling a little, kind of neglected because those areas didn't seem to get the same kind of attention that some of the sports got at the school that I went to. That being said, my daughter now at seven is very athletic and is at practice for a sport that is parent-sponsored currently for about fifteen hours a week. Without that fifteen hours of week of being involved in that sport, I don't know that she would be able to concentrate as well as she's able to in school. She needs that outlet and I, I anticipate that she is going to need that outlet. As, as several of you have mentioned, you know, kids need that, whether it's music, whether it's sports, whatever it is. I think the bigger picture is, you know, we need to offer our kids that. I think that's our job as public educators and as members of the school board to be able to offer kids those extracurriculars. But maybe we can look at that kind of in unique ways. You know, parents will pay to watch their children participate in sports. And I know that some activities that we go to, we pay admission. Maybe there are ways that the sports or the other extracurriculars can become a little bit more self-sufficient. Also, you know, again, I think there's ways to look at maybe sliding scales so that not only my child can participate in sports and other extracurriculars, but that all kids can. So maybe if I'm able to invest a little bit more, there are other children who maybe can benefit from that. I know there's, there's some parts of the country that there are those placements in, in sports where parents pay a certain amount and they're sliding scales based on need, that kind of thing. Because I think that's really the key. It's really important for all kids to have those opportunities because I think that makes them more successful again in education as children and in life as they, as they become adults.
Thank you. To Rebecca.
Well, well, the answer, I, I would need to do some research to find out what, where we are in regard to the funding of specifically sports comparison to our other programs, our extracurricular programs at our schools. But I think in Fargo, we're fortunate that we, we have a large enough community with three high schools and the middle schools and the elementary schools that we have to be able to offer to our children, hopefully, activities, sports and other extracurricular activities, theater, music, drama, chess club, that, that will offer children opportunities to participate in a variety of their interests. I think that oftentimes, you, you know, there are those classes that you have to take and you have, you have your electives, but oftentimes participating in an extracurricular activity is where a child can find him or herself. It can be sometimes the best spot, in addition, the best spot, the safest spot for a child to be in addition to spending their hours at, at school in, in their, in the classes that they need to take. So extracurricular activities provide a valuable resource to our children. Oftentimes, they have the opportunity to explore their interests and they end up going into fields professionally that match up, you know, with some of the extracurricular activities that they participate in. Learn team management, learn how to work with others, learn problem solving, get valuable exercise, whether it is physical fitness exercise, whether it's exercise of the mind. So we need to be able to offer a well-balanced approach to extracurricular activities throughout our Fargo school system and obviously looking at the budget is, is essential for that.
All right. Thank you. So with our next question, we will start with Dinah. And the question is, do you think Fargo schools have adequate security? If no, what would you change?
Okay, another issue that's very different from when most of us went to school. I think that everybody probably has a different idea of what adequate security means. I think that at the Fargo public schools, we take the issue of security very seriously. A lot of what we do, we don't advertise because of course that wouldn't make things more secure. But you may all be aware of the fact that over the last few months, we have installed entry buzzer systems in all of our schools so that there, you, except for, you know, the beginning and end of the day when the mass kids are coming in and out, you have to buzz in and you have to notify who you are and, in order to get into the schools. We also do drills for all sorts of activities from fire to anything else that you can think of. I think we are proactive. We have been proactive with our decisions about security. I think as times change, if there's recommendations for additional things, then it will be reviewed and discussed. We also take seriously security in our buses with proper rules and, and things so that kids are safe on buses. I, I can't say today there's something else I know about that we should be doing. I think every day we're doing what we should be doing.
Thank you. To Scott.
I, I believe they are. I believe we do have enough security. I don't know firsthand, my kids don't go to school yet. All I know is what I kind of read in the newspaper and, and see on, on television. I do know that, as, as, it's tough because the resources that are allotted for the school district, if, if you start talking about added security when you start going like an airport type or, or scanners and this and that, you're, you're talking about lots and lots of dollars. Not to say that children aren't worth every penny that you put into that. Every, this, this, this whole board has to work. And it's, it's such a hard, it's such a hard, hard subject to talk about because it's, of course, I want to spend every penny I have to make sure that my kids are secure. But what, what comes to be, to be feasible to make the rest of it work? What do we, at what point do we say, okay, this is, this is good? I mean, there's always going to be an anomaly in any sort of situation you come, which is unfortunate because we're talking about our children. But I, I don't know what, you know, it appears to me that we do have enough security at, for the time being. Thank you.
Thank you. To Teri Lee.
Thank you. I actually, in my experience, feel that Fargo public schools are very secure. I know at my daughter's school, just this year, they've installed the buzzer system. It works very well. The kids were very well rehearsed on how it works. And the, the staff, I mean, really, they're the ones that are there protecting our students. I've walked into the building with my daughter and although they know me, you know, they are very quick to say, you need to sign in, you need, you can't walk down to the room yet, you know, certain times of the day. So in that experience, you know, I feel very comfortable with, with my daughter's security when she's at her school. I've also had the opportunity to visit many of the junior high and high schools. I'm invited to come speak on Career Day and I've, I've really enjoyed doing that several different times throughout the years since we've lived here. And I've always been very impressed walking through the halls of the middle, middle schools and high schools here with the level of security. Exterior doors, I've always seen staff, you know, present in between class changes. We have always, as professionals from the community invited into the schools, been escorted, have had name badges. So in my experience, I see that there is a lot of security. There are always going to be things out there that can harm our children. And I think as, as parents, those of you in the room who are parents, it's, I mean, it's something we, we have to live with and it can be very emotional. But at the same time, you know, you, you can plan, you can do everything you can and there's still going to be things that are, you know, that are out there to hurt them. But I really do think, you know, right now Fargo public schools is doing a great job. I'm sure, you know, like Dinah mentioned, in the future, there are going to be changes that are going to need to be made. But right now, that's an area that I, I think we're doing great.
Thank you. To Rebecca.
Yes, I personally have never felt unsafe in our schools. I don't believe our children have either, my three children. My, my twin girls did come home and, and talk about the, the fact that the security system was put in at Clara Barton and gave us the instructions in regard to how to use it. I have forgotten a couple of times when I've gone to school that I need to buzz myself in and I've, well, one time I was at Hawthorne and I looked at the door and it said, use this door and I tried to open it and I thought, well, why can't I get in? It says, this is the door I'm supposed to use. Oh, that's right, there's the buzzer system. So anyway, buzzed myself in and, and just fine. You know, one of the things that's really nice about a neighborhood school is that they know us, they know the parents. And so you buzz, who are you? Rebecca. They know me by Rebecca, not even Rebecca Knutson. And, and same thing at Hawthorne. And, and neighborhood schools have a unique opportunity that way. And, and even before a person enters into a school, there's this term called eyes on the street. And so by having smaller schools located within neighborhoods where individuals are outside, they're seeing kids walking to school, they're seeing adults walking around in the neighborhood, playing on the playground or watching their children play on the playground, that provides an additional sense of security. So I think there are a variety of ways that we can look at ways of helping to make our schools more safe. I was impressed last week when I went into Fargo South, which is where my son goes to school. He was donating blood. I had to go in and, and sign a form for him to donate blood. And there was an individual working on the, the north side of that building, right at the entrance with badges and a sign-in sheet so that parents easily are reminded or any, even if you're not a parent, easily reminded, I need to stop in and, you know, sign in and put a badge on. And, and I, I just feel like our, our schools are, are safe and is, and secure where they need to be right now and that our administration is, is putting together anything, any, all the plans that need to be in place right now to make sure that our kids and our teachers and our staff are as safe and secure as possible.
All right. Thank you. To Jennifer.
So do I think that Fargo public schools has adequate security? First, I would say, I certainly appreciate that the district has demonstrated taking a proactive approach. And I can share with you that the other night at kindergarten roundup for my youngest child, Mr. Hanson, the principal at Kennedy, shared with us that there are now cameras on the buses and they are things that they can refer back to, they are saved. So if they need to see what happened during an event in time, they can look all of those things up. As in addition, he talked about the future and additional things that they're doing for security. And he mentioned the ability to see when and where by a GPS sort of locator, when and where your child got off the bus. And, and I think that it's impressive that we're, we are, you know, doing these things, being proactive before something, you know, tragic happens. So hopefully that it never does. So yes, I think that they're doing a good job in this arena.
All right. Thank you. So we are getting to the end of our time for this group of candidates. So we will start with Scott Doms to do the one-minute wrap-up.
Okay. So over, over the course of the last hour, I've kind of given you an introduction of myself. I'm not an educator. I'm not really proficient in security. I'm not a lot of the things that, that I believe that this board currently has. What I do believe I bring to the table, I bring architectural experience, I bring construction experience, I bring the ability to be creative in terms of looking at our resources. experience, I bring the ability to be creative in terms of looking at our resources and looking at different options to move this, to move everything forward and move and accomplish our goals with the, the money that is set forth for us. I do appreciate it, or ask for your vote. I'm a little unconventional candidate in terms of who I am, but I do believe that I, I make a nice addition to a team that could, that could be up here and, and serve the city of Fargo. Thank you.
Thank you. To Terry Lee James.
Thank you again for coming today. The fact that you all are here means that you care about our students, just like all of us up here do, and I appreciate that. Again, I'll say, I believe that excellent public education is a key factor to our community's prosperity and success in the future. That's why I moved here, was so that I could be part of that community, so that my child could be educated by these public schools. And I appreciate you taking me into your community, me and my family. To ensure that that excellence is continued, we need proactive, forward-thinking leaders who are capable of managing resources wisely, who value education for all of our students and who have a vested interest in our future. And I truly believe I am one of those leaders and I hope you will give me an opportunity to prove that on June 10th. Thank you.
Thank you. To Rebecca Knudsen.
All right, thanks again to the League of Women Voters and to those of you here today and listening at home. Schools support the vitality, health, and security of our neighborhoods. They are one of the most important assets of our community. I believe we are stronger when we hear views that are different than our own, which is why I welcome diversity, public input and engagement in a process to decision-making. My special interest is you. As a board member, I will work hard to research issues that are not familiar to me. As Scott said, or I believe one of the things you mentioned, you know, a lot of it, we don't, we don't know a lot of, a lot of what we'll be encountering as members of this board. So, I think we need to all understand that and we need to be open to research and asking questions and talking to individuals to help us make, make up our decisions. That's my, that's the way that I make decisions, is by listening to people, reaching out, talking. And not only to people that agree with me, but to people that don't. I believe that's the way I will learn the most. I will be accessible throughout the rest of this campaign and I look for your first vote on June 10th. Thank you.
Thank you. To Jennifer Benson.
So, thank you again for, all of you for taking the time to be here and engage. And, you know, first and most important, I want to say, you know, I'm a proud mom of three young kids and I have high expectations for the quality of education that they receive. And, and second, I'm a working professional and I have, you know, my work requires me to collaborate with many different departments, build consensus among them and operate within tight budgets. I believe all these skills are things that I can bring to, as a member of the board. I'm familiar with the job expectations of being a school board member because I have attended the majority of the meetings over the last two years. Fargo Public Schools is growing at an average of over 200 students per year. Along with the steady growth of Fargo, I think that our future is exciting. And I ask for your vote on June 10th. Thank you.
Thank you. To Dinah Goldenberg.
Thank you again for everyone for being here and for the League for hosting us. After nine years of volunteering in my children's classrooms, on school PTA boards and district-wide education committees, I wanted to play a greater role in advocating for our educational system. Eight years ago, I ran for the school board because I have a heartfelt passion for quality education for all students. It has been a very rewarding experience and I believe that my ability to listen and collaborate with others has been an asset to the board. Being a board member has not always been easy. There are many difficult decisions that need to be made. Regardless of the issue, my vote is always focused on what is best for the education of all Fargo students. I am proud to say that both my sons are graduates of the Fargo Schools and were well-prepared for their college careers. If we haven't answered any of your questions today, please feel free to contact me and I would appreciate your vote on June 10th. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we wrap up, we just do want to remind everyone that the election is on June 10th, as many people have put into their closing remarks. But also that there are new voter ID law that has went into effect for this election. So, you will be required to have a state-issued ID in order to vote. And you can get more information on that from the Secretary of State's office so that you are prepared when you go to vote on June 10th. And we do obviously want to thank all the candidates for coming and everyone that has submitted questions and attended today and everyone that is watching the rebroadcast on TV. So we will wrap up for this group and the next group of school board candidates will start at 11:00. Thank you. Looks like everyone is ready to go. So we will start the second group of the Fargo School Board for the candidates' forum. Just in case any of you were not here at the beginning of the last one, the format will be that each candidate will get a two-minute introduction, two minutes to answer questions, and then a one-minute wrap-up at the end. We will be using the same questions that we used for the first group of candidates, but since this is a one smaller group, we may be able to fit in one extra question at the end. We'll kind of see how that, that works as far as the, the length of your answers. But we will start with Lynda Boyd for the introduction and then the, the first question will go to Ahmed Camel and then so on down the line. So Lynda Boyd, if you want to start us off.
...for hosting this forum. I'm Lynda Boyd. I am finishing my first term on the Fargo School Board and I just have to say, I'm extremely proud to serve on that body. I think it is one of the more inspiring and professional groups that I've, I've dealt with. And we all, although we, as individual members, might have different opinions on different issues as they arise, I believe that everyone acts with absolute integrity and with a passion for the quality of education that we are responsible for providing for our students. And so that's why I'm running for reelection. I'm proud of the work we've done. I'm passionate about providing a quality education for every student in the district in Fargo. And I believe that my combination of experiences and background in education, in nonprofit arts administration, and in local government helps me bring some tools and, and aspects to the table that I feel is helpful and I learn something new every day. So I'm very happy to be running for reelection.
Thank you. To Ahmed Camel.
Good morning and thank you everybody for coming today. Thank you for the League of Women Voters for hosting us. And thank you to the people who are listening at home as well now or on a rerun. My name is Ahmed Camel. I am a professor of computer science and management information systems at Concordia College. I moved to Fargo 15 years ago with my family, my wife and our then-two children, now, now three. I have two older children who went through the Fargo Public School System and they're now grown-ups. And I have a son who's a fifth grader right now at Centennial Elementary. I believe I have the experience here to, to be part of this. I love this community. I like to serve the community back because I feel this is home. I grew up in Egypt. I moved to the United States 26 years ago, 15, the last 15 of them being in Fargo. I've been involved with the school system. I run a program at Centennial Elementary that, and I helped several other schools in the area actually start the same program called Lego League where I teach kids science through the use of Legos and play. We compete in robotics competitions and so on. Like I said, I've also been involved, I have about 20-year experience in the higher education field. I've been a college professor for a long time. So I, I see the other end of the spectrum where the students come in after they graduate high school and this gives me a feel of, of what they need and so on. I also believe that schools and the educational system are a quality of life issue. They are an important part of the community we live in, not just for the children, but for the betterment of the community. And I look for your vote on June 10th.
Thank you. To Marty Levin-Good.
Hello there. First of all, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this. And I'm excited to be a candidate for the Fargo School Board. I believe I bring a unique assortment of qualifications and background and experience to this position. First, real quickly about myself, I've lived in Fargo for over 25 years with my wife Barb, who's a homemaker. She's an ex-alimentary teacher. We're fortunate enough to have six children. Two of them have gone through the school system and had great educations and I've seen what they've done. I have somebody in the high school as a junior. And then I have three elementary students at the first, second, and third grade. So I've seen all avenues and I'm very much in touch with what's going on in our school system right now. And so you can see, one reason I'm running for school board is I just have a very vested interest in, in what's going on here. It's very important to me. I'm an ex-teacher myself. I taught 10 years business education, coached basketball. During that time, I took a year off of teaching and received a master's in education. So I have a very good background in what education is all about. For the last 25 years or so, I have been working for a publishing company that produces materials for schools. I called on high schools in North Dakota and Minnesota. I've been in every school in those two states. I've dealt with curriculum people. I know what's going on in technology. I then had a regional manager position with that company and I oversaw people in Illinois and Detroit and Kansas City. I've worked in all sorts of school districts. I've seen all sorts of things going on. Currently, I work for the college division and I work with math and science instructors. And I know, again, that view of it, I know what's going on in technology and that hasn't been brought up a lot, but I know what the trends are in technology, really more than many teachers do because my company is one of the leading ones in that forefront. So I think with all of these different things, I, I bring more to a position as far as background and knowledge than many. As a manager, I oversaw huge budgets. We had to hire people. So I just think I, somebody who can come in and, and ask the right questions. And I appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. To Tyler John Anderson.
First off, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting us here today. I'd like to thank the audience as well as those that'll be turning in on television later. Now, my name is Tyler Anderson and I have a passion for the future of education. I grew up, my mother was an educator, both my sisters were educators as well. And this had a significant influence on the ways that I grew up, the levels of attention I got from educators at a very early age. My, my parents and my, my sisters were able to really kind of use me as, I hate to say guinea pig, but I, I was basically in a classroom setting from a very early age and onwards. Moving forward from that, I got a bachelor's degree in secondary education from NDSU, master's degree in sociology from the same university. And currently, I'm working as a project manager for Ida Bailey here in town. The tools that I use from that job, I consistently work to make, to ensure that projects come in on time and under budget. I believe that based on some of the happenings that have recently went on with, with budget, budgetary matters with the current school board, someone with my level of expertise in dealing with those issues should be quite a boon for the, the school board itself. Like I mentioned before, my passion is the future of education. My platform revolves around seamless integration of technology within the classroom itself, how I get from, how we get from here to there. I've explained on my Facebook campaign page, TylerJohnAndersonForFargoSchoolBoard.com. Please check in with that and find out some more detailed levels of information, more than I can give you on a forum like this. Beyond that, I also wish to increase the level of engagement with the school board and the public. I think that that's been another area that has been kind of lacking recently. And lastly, thank you for your, your attention and, and time today. Thank you.
Thank you. So now for the questions, we will start with Ahmed Camel. And the first question is, what would you do as a school board member to preserve neighborhood schools? And also, what can the citizens of Fargo do to help preserve neighborhood schools?
The school system in general serves a, a very important role in our educating our children, but also serves another very important role as a quality of life issue for the community as a whole. When I moved to Fargo 15 years ago, before I even applied for a job to, which is the job that made me move, what's the first thing? I looked at the schools. How are the schools in the area? We live in a time now where there is a huge growth happening in Fargo, where especially in the high-tech sector, there are several companies moving in or, or existing companies that are growing. And the only way for them to grow is to attract people from outside the area. If we want the community to grow like this, the, the one factor that will help good professionals decide they want to move into our area are good schools. That being said, good schools can mean a variety of different things for different people. The schools, the existing schools all should be preserved, whether they're the smaller schools or the larger ones. The smaller schools, even, they live, they are, the issue that, there is a public perception that, okay, do we need them anymore? These neighborhoods are aging, we don't have that many kids. But the fact is, because these neighborhoods are aging, many of these houses are in the process of turning over where the new professionals will be the new occupants with their children that will be there to fill the schools. So we do need all the schools and it's an important issue that we have to.
All right, thank you. To Marty.
My first question is, what do you mean by neighborhood school? I mean, is a neighborhood school one that's a block from your house? I think neighborhood schools shouldn't be about how close you are to the building. It should be about the atmosphere and attitude that exists in that building. How much is that school part of the community? I think that's what really is important about neighborhood schools. And, you know, I think part of the unspoken part of that question is, do you think we should have smaller schools on the north side than we do on the south side? Well, to me, that's not really even a discussion. That's the way it is. And I think our current system is working. I think it's fine. They've invested some more money into certain aspects of it. I think that can continue to work and so on. We need to constantly evaluate what's the best way to solve our students' needs. The population is changing. We're going to have to adjust to those. There's going to be some major decisions on school boundaries that are going to affect everybody in the time coming up. We want people on the board who will look at these logically and fair for everybody, not somebody who says, well, I'm from the south side, I want to preserve this school. Or I'm from the north end and boy, I want to get on the board so I can keep that open. We want somebody who can look at things, make the best decision for everybody, both educationally and using our resources. Thank you.
All right, to Tyler.
I think this is an interesting question because what works in some situations won't necessarily be applicable in others. Based on density alone, the neighborhoods up in the northern part of Fargo, their neighborhood schools work for them. Now, those same, same schools couldn't be transplanted to, you know, areas where the, there's a lot higher density, a lot, a lot of apartment complexes without being prohibited by costs, by costs alone. Therefore, I mean, whenever the city, Fargo's growing at a, a rate that is, you know, unheard of even 10 years ago. The, the school, the school board itself needs to work hand-in-hand with the, the city of Fargo to plan ahead and based on growth track records for, for the city itself needs to focus on what type of schools would work best in, in the future neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. To Lynda.
Thank you. When we're talking about neighborhood schools, often what we're really talking about are elementary schools. And Fargo has an interesting, existing building stock. We have the smaller neighborhood schools on the north side and the largest elementary schools on the south side that were a response to the growth patterns of our city. And we do work very closely with the city planning department on a weekly, monthly basis. So we're absolutely up on where the future of development is. And just this past year, when we went through our long-range facility planning process, we brought in two, two of the best consulting firms in the nation, one on building and facility issues and one on demography issues. And Fargo, the face of Fargo has changed over the past recent years, as you mentioned. And so I think the perception was out there earlier that there are all these north-side schools that are emptying out and they're just kind of empty shells and we don't need them anymore. It would be a much more efficient use of resources if we somehow address that. And today, those schools are full. We need those schools and if they went away, we'd have to have other schools to address the kids that are there in, in every part of the community. So, we also heard in the many, many public meetings that, that we hosted during that facility planning process, is how highly-held a value in Fargo neighborhood schools are. They, as, as you mentioned, they're the face of a neighborhood, they provide stability, they provide a convening space, they... They serve many purposes outside of the classroom. So I think you saw by the actions of the school board recently, a commitment to keeping all those neighborhood schools open and not only open, but making sure that the experience inside those buildings was equitable throughout the district. So we're investing in those buildings by making sure they're all air-conditioned because they're used in the summer, it's hot in the fall. We're making sure that not only are the neighborhood schools there, but they're well-maintained.
All right. Thank you. So the next question, we'll start with Marty. And the question is, what is your view on how many standardized tests are students take during the year?
Well, my junior son will probably disagree with me, but I think that testing is fine. I don't think there are too many tests. I think that maybe there can be an issue on, do we spend too much time preparing for tests or studying towards a test? That possibly can be an issue. I really don't know if it is in the classroom or not. Regardless of the standards that a district adopts, testing is necessary. You have to see, are you accomplishing what you want to accomplish? So that also says, what's the test doing? Is the test testing what we want tested? And if it is, then that's how you get feedback. That's how you provide consistency across a district and hopefully eventually consistency across a state. In my current position, I see math professors at colleges and it doesn't matter if it's a two-year school or a four-year school, you know, they have huge issues with students coming in saying, I've had algebra II and here it means this and here it means that. They were both B students. So testing helps provide that consistency. It helps do what you're doing or you say you're going to do with the standards, whatever those standards are. And since I might have a little time, as far as standards go, I think it's up for all of this, for your administrators to decide, are the tests doing it? I sure won't have that knowledge. They use their expertise and their teachers to help decide, are we teaching what we're supposed to be teaching and are we evaluating it in the right way? Thank you.
Thank you. To Tyler.
Now, for good or for ill, I believe, we are currently living in a data-driven society. Doesn't matter what aspect of the world you live in, whether it's business, education or whatnot, data provides us with relative information that we can then take to address potential issues. Now, in education, that data comes from tests. Our students themselves, you know, what they, the concepts that they're grasping at the educational level need to be found out and that data needs to be supplied to teachers so they can then address, like I said, any kids that may be falling behind. And testing needs to be, needs to happen on a very consistent basis. I wouldn't say that we're over-testing our children. What I believe that we should be doing, though, is testing maybe more on a conceptual basis rather than just a scattershot of which specific facts that they know, years, dates, so on and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you. To Linda.
There's all kinds of assessment and I think that's what we're talking about is, how can you assess if the students have learned what we've put in front of them to learn? And there's the assessment that's done in the classroom on a regular basis that gives instant feedback to the student, to the teacher, and is just an integral part of the education process. There's testing that's mandated from outside. There's tests that the federal government and the state government has told us that we must give. And then there's the migration to Common Core, which puts a national set of standards out there. So as you say, people, children moving from state to state, there won't be those wide disparities of what teachers or students are learning in each state. But as we move into assessment in Common Core, we'll have to make sure that the tests and assessments are aligned with those standards. And we are in the process of that. And what I think is positive is that in the old days of top-down kind of federal mandates, what's going to be tested? Actually, in Common Core, it's been more of a bottom-up. Our teachers, our curriculum specialists and our administrators have had a hand in designing those assessments. And that's, I think, when it's most meaningful and helpful. And that, for example, North Dakota several years ago mandated that every student take the ACT test. Well, the ACT test was designed as a college entrance-type test. So the stakes are high in terms of what do we do with those results when we get them? And how are people looking at those results and comparing them and making some sort of meaningful interpretation of those? So if you have every kid, whether they're language ability or headed towards a building trade or headed to Harvard, taking the same test and then making judgments from there, I think we have to be very cautious and understand the context of all the assessment that we do.
Thank you. Ahmed.
As an educator myself, I'll tell you that testing is an important part of the educational process. You actually cannot say, I don't need testing. There's no way. A good educator, in fact, wants to have the results of the test so that he or she knows their own students and know what they're, where they are, what do they need, what do they need work on, what do they need less work on, and so on. So testing in and of itself is certainly a necessary part of the educational process. Like anything else, testing needs continuous modification. We can't say, okay, we're happy with the standard tests we have right now, let's go to sleep on them. That doesn't work. The standard tests that are in place now are serving the purpose very well, but of course, they will continuously need to be updated as the needs of the educational community emerge over time. That said, there is a problem that was pointed out by others before, is that sometimes the time before the test is essentially taken away from the educational process and spent on testing. My personal observation is this actually varies, there are huge variation between one teacher and the next. And that's an issue that maybe should be addressed at the schools' level between the teachers and the principals. There are some teachers who take significant amounts of time, weeks, sometimes more, telling students specific strategies for the test. And there are others who say, well, I'm teaching you, I'm teaching the skills you need, the test is there to measure that and let it be. I personally like the second approach better, but that's an issue that maybe needs to be addressed at a school basis between the principals and the teachers. It's not a policy level about the test itself.
All right. So our next question, we'll start with Tyler. Does Fargo spend too much time and resources on sports?
Coming from my background, it's a little unique. I grew up in a small town in northern North Dakota, about population 90. The school itself, I grew up, my graduating class was 13. So when we had a budget for sporting, sports and other extracurricular activities, it was typically operated on a kind of a shoestring budget, if there was a budget there at all. So we had to rely on a system of clubs, a club-based system. Or like summer baseball, we played legion ball quite often. And these were very successful in providing extracurricular activities as well as sports to kids that normally wouldn't have them provided or subsidized by the school itself. I believe that this way, it may sound kind of like a radical idea in a way to address how budgets are applied towards sporting events or extracurricular activities, but to maybe go towards more of a club-based structure for our sports and extracurricular activities. Another way to, it's also kind of a way to get away from seeing this constant stream of boosters that are nonstop at your door, selling magazines, this, that and the other. And I know that, speaking from personal experience, we're all probably a little annoyed by that, to say the least. But like I said, going towards more of a club-based system, I think, would be something that we should explore. Being on the school board, I think it'd be a good way to kind of bake in some cost savings into the structure as it is right now. Thank you.
Thank you. To Linda.
I have to respectfully disagree and here's why. Not only sports, but any kind of extracurricular activity or co-curricular activity is one of the most effective and proven ways of increasing graduation rate. If a kid is engaged in school, the chances are much higher that kid will be successful, may even find a passion that he wants to pursue in the rest of his or her life. If you have only club-based sports, only the kids who can afford to participate will be able to. And if they can't afford it, they'll be at your door selling stuff. The Fargo Public Schools a few years ago changed its policy so that school sporting teams cannot do door-to-door fundraising anymore. We've adopted the policy that it's our responsibility, if we're going to have this array of opportunities available for our students, that that's something that we need to take responsibility for. And so as someone who made my path that was started in school and continued in college and my professional life in the field of music, a lot of my fellow musicians often kind of whine about sports and, oh, sports get all the money and attention. I'm a huge sports fan and my kids were both active in both music and sports. And I think done responsibly, they're a huge asset to a school setting and kid's life. That said, several years ago, we made the shift to zero-based budgeting, which is not only simply rollover last year's budget and if you don't spend it, you know, you lose it, so go ahead and spend it. We are absolutely on a very closely, kind of at a granular level, making sure that we're budgeting extremely responsibly and efficiently and effectively and making as many opportunities available for as many students as we possibly can.
Thank you. Ahmed.
All right. The short answer is no, I do not think we're spending too much resources on sports. But to elaborate on it more, what I would like to see is a balanced approach to extracurricular activities. Because all extracurricular activities are important. We certainly have spent significant resources on sport. We spend resources, maybe less, but significant resources on art, music and so on. What I would really like to see, I'd like to see a third leg to this tool, science and math. As a college educator in a scientific field, I see it all the time and we talk about it and there is a movement nationwide, actually, to push more math and science extracurricular activities at the school levels. Like I mentioned earlier, I'm personally involved in setting up a Lego League club at Centennial and I helped several other schools actually set a similar club where kids using toys, Legos, build robots and learn scientific skills. They build the robots, they program them and so forth and compete in national competitions. Unfortunately, recently, I've seen an event, my heart was broken, not in our district, but in a neighboring district. A robotics team actually ranked second in North Dakota and they qualified to go to the World Nationals in Toronto and they did not go because they failed to raise enough funds. Certainly, this is something that schools and school boards should be involved in and should make sure it doesn't happen in all areas of extracurricular activities because extracurricular activities are a quality of life issue. It's not only, it's not, some people will tell me it's not a need, it's a want. I will argue that it is a need for the quality of life of the kids and of the entire community.
Thank you. To Marty.
Well, hopefully by sports, they mean all activities because I'm not pro-sport or pro-fine arts. I think all activities are going to be good. Do sports maybe get more publicity, but we're not in control of that. I do think you always need to look at cost and I'm sure they have studies saying, okay, we got 50 participants here and the cost is this and it comes out to this per student. And you have to kind of look at that, no question. But as was mentioned, extracurriculars and involvement is one of the biggest key indicators of future success. I think I've even seen studies that say those that are involved in things at school, that's a better indicator than their ACT score on how well they succeed in college. So I think it's vital that we get as many people and involved as many things as we can. My three older children participated in activities and it was definitely a boon for them in many ways. And my three younger children, I have no idea what they're going to do, but we're going to make sure they do something because you need to. And it's just a vital part of your education. And so I think that we want to do that to encourage it. And you can't be status quo. Boy, if there's interest in Lego Leagues like I think at Centennial, I don't think it's, I think it's all volunteer-driven. You know, if you get to a certain level at junior high and there's people on it, we should help fund that. I do think you would run into trouble if you're going to a national tournament. My son qualified for FBLA in Nashville, but he's not going because we can't afford it and it doesn't fit the needs. But I don't know that he gets a greater experience going to a national thing. I think you want him to compete, you want him to learn what that's all about, and that in turn is going to be successful. So no, I think it's a vital part of our program.
All right. Thank you. So the next question, we will start with Linda. Do you think Fargo schools have adequate security? And if no, what would you change?
This is near and dear to everybody's heart, safety of our kids, obviously. I do feel that our schools are safe. We have invested in camera and buzzer systems in all of our schools. We have proctors at the entrances. We have cameras on buses. We've done those physical things that I think are important to assure the safety of our students. In the wake of school tragedies, often there is a call for extraordinary measures. And I think in those situations, we turn to best practices as we learn about in national conferences and studies, that things like metal detectors actually backfire. They create an atmosphere that does more harm than good to a student's psyche and it doesn't frankly keep our kids any safer. That all said, I think security also refers to how safe our students feel in their schools. We take school climate extremely seriously and I absolutely have to give props to our superintendent Jeff Schatz, who has focused almost immediately on the issue of school climate when he came on board. And the bullying policies flowed from that. And the idea that when you go to school, it's not only a place where you're physically safe, but you're emotionally safe as well. And that we are mindful of all the things that that takes, even down to professional development for our staff.
Thank you. Ahmed.
All right. I take a slightly non-traditional approach to this. Certainly, the schools, the current level of safety is adequate, if not more than adequate. I teach professionally, I teach computer security. And there is an analogy I use in classrooms, I'll mention it right now, all the time. I tell them, look at the houses we live in. The majority of us live in a house with a very strong deadbolt on the door with a glass panel right next to it. Why are we doing this? We're not doing it to deter the determined intruder. The determined intruder will find a way. What we're there is to make it harder for the less determined intruder. In that regard, I really think the current system is sufficient, if not more than sufficient. I like the idea of what Linda mentioned, focusing on other aspects of security as well, the emotional aspects and the bullying and so forth. That's even more important because if we put too many security measures, again, like Linda mentioned, this is going to have a really detrimental effect on a kid's psyche. You don't want to do that. And at the end of the day, we send our kids to school, we hope for the best, we know that we live in a world, unfortunately, the reality of the world, we are not 100% safe. We cannot make it 100% safe to our kids. We make it adequately safe. And that's what matters. And the other aspects, of course, the emotional stability and security and so forth, that we can have a significant effect on and that's where we should direct more resources to.
Thank you. To Marty.
Yes, I think it's wholly adequate. I think really wanting to evaluate, what are you trying to be secure from? And then there's different answers. Are you trying to protect yourself from this crazy idiot that's going to burst into your school? Are you going to try to protect people from molesters near the playground? Are you going to protect student against student? Are you going to protect an uncustodial parent from doing something they're not supposed to do? Are you want to take care of bus activity? So I think you have to look at each situation and say, okay, what's the issue in our district? What do we see the potential? And then how do we combat it? And there's no question, things have changed. In my career of calling on schools, I remember vividly, I could go into school districts in Minneapolis and I'd walk through the front door, I would not stop at the office because that might hinder me from seeing who I wanted to see. And I'd just walk up to the teacher's room, look in the door and they'd come out and talk to me. And I could spend a half a day and no one would question anything about me. Well, that's impossible anywhere now. Later in the career, I still remember before it became an issue around here, going into districts that one maybe give a fingerprint before you could go through and they ran a background check before you could go through. You'd give a driver's license to them and they'd escort you everywhere. I- I am impressed with a couple of answers. I do think, for the most part, a lot of it's perception. I mean, you're not going to stop certain things, but if you perceive that and the students perceive it, it's a much better atmosphere and it's good for us. So yes, I think the district is doing a fine job in that area, and it's constantly something that you always want to look at, but you have to be reasonable in what your expectations are.
Thank you. To Tyler.
I'm going to take a bit of a different tact from the other three here and say no, that our schools do not have in place at present day, a reasonable level of protection for our students. I'm not sure how many of you today are aware, but yesterday in the news, there was a brief article in the Inform, stating that there was another student just across the river in Minnesota who had written 180 pages in a journal detailing how he was going to kill his family, his teacher, and as many students as he could at his school as well. This is a very real and persistent threat. And I believe that our kids' security is of the utmost priority for us. Now, my background, I forgot to mention earlier, was I spent a year in Iraq and a year in Afghanistan. And part of my military training stipulates that we train for active shooter situations. Now, training is just one portion of where I'd like to go, a more intense training of where I'd like to go for public schools in Fargo. But another important aspect that I think that we currently lack is having an immediate reaction force, which is proven to save lives. And again, I shouldn't need to stress this, but our students' lives are probably the utmost priority when it comes to education. Beyond that, I also don't believe that having metal detectors is necessarily a detriment to our students' psyche. I believe our kids are considerably more resilient, psychologically speaking, just based on my educational background and my master's in sociology, I had a bit of a focus on that as well. But I guess to reiterate, I believe that we should be spending a bit more money and time on the security of our students. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So our next question will begin with Ahmed. What does Fargo do or what should Fargo be doing to help students or to help accommodate students of varying levels of ability, whether they're, you know, maybe quote-unquote gifted students, or if they're, you know, falling behind in their learning?
I think every school district does an excellent job educating the student in the middle. What we, the students who need the most effort, strength, resources are the students at both ends of the spectrum. And even though it requires a lot of resources, I think that these are important resources that are, need to be spent. We, here in Fargo, we have a reasonable level of special accommodations for both the gifted students and the special needs students at the elementary level. It can use some strengthening. The focus right now is strictly reading and math. I would like to see a focus on additional subjects, especially science. And I would like to see more emphasis on this at the higher levels. At the high school, there are advanced courses and so forth, but many of the families I've talked to who've had kids go through the entire system, including my own family, see that there, we need strengthening, especially at the middle school level. At all levels, but especially at the middle school level. So that's from the academic point of view. We also need some focus on bridging the gaps between students at the different socioeconomic levels, especially the new immigrants. There, because they lack, many of them not all, lack the help that others can get at home, they probably need additional assistance at the schools. And at all of these levels, it's important that we put the necessary resources into them.
Thank you. To Marty.
Well, with having six children, I'm used to diverse methods and needs of learning and special needs for all of them. And I'm not sure if I heard right, but I kind of disagree in the sense, I think the middle student is the one who has, we give the less resources to. I think we do a lot for the advanced kids, a lot for the kids that need some special things. I think our middle students are sometimes the ones that flounder a little bit more and that we really need to be concerned about. But beyond that, I mean, special needs students, Fargo does a good job. They have a lot of programs, they have a lot of things going on, we have a very diverse population, and it brings extreme challenges. I think it's something that they continually need to review and continually need to evaluate. How can we help these people with these special needs be more accepting and to fit in better? You know, getting parents involved with these people with special needs and getting them part of the program on how you're going to help them is vital to it being successful. So, you know, in closing on it, a big issue, we have a more diverse population all the time, we have to have things in place on how we're going to attack it, and we need to constantly evaluate that process.
Thank you. To Tyler.
Could you repeat the exact question, please?
Yes. What does Fargo do or what should Fargo do to help accommodate students of varying levels of ability?
I believe that technology is the cornerstone of any great education, and that is something that applies to anyone across any socioeconomic background. It is kind of the great leveller of any playing field. Currently as it is, the current state of technology within Fargo Public Schools is kind of a salt and pepper approach. It's applied in certain situations, but it's not seamlessly integrated, which is where I firmly believe is where the future for education is, lies. There is a man by name of Saul Kahn, who is the creative genius behind a program called Kahn Academy. And this is a one-to-one educational platform that is easily accessible and easily understood by the students that have participated in this. There is a pilot study done in Palo Alto, California, that they brought in this application, which is a software-based application that, like I said, deals with these, the fundamentals, mostly dealing with STEM programs, and applies it in ways that I don't think the traditional medium, blackboard, teacher to student, really fairly addresses to our students. This is something that I would be very interested in bringing toward, to the Fargo Public School System, whether it's a pilot school ourself, because these have been tested and tried and found to be very successful. Or just an exploratory committee at least, to see what can be done to help bring in these levels of technology to Fargo. Thank you.
Thank you. To Linda.
Thanks. Accommodating various levels of student ability is a continual focus of our school district. You mentioned new Americans. In our English language learning program, we have more than 750 students, which is larger than the majority of school districts in the state of North Dakota. That's in ELL programs alone. But beyond that, I mean, if you ever want to be incredibly inspired, walk through the Agassi Building and see the different programs that are going on there, not just with students, but also with families and the ways that the school district is reaching out to the entire population. But apart from that, I think it is a broader willingness to have a creative approach to using the resources that we have. We are in a community with Sanford Health, with NDSU, with Microsoft, and the more collaboration we can do with those entities, the better. We're working collaboratively with the West Fargo School District in several STEM initiatives. We have the Glass Paper Project, which is really looking at the future of technology and integrating that in all of our classrooms. And I think the old stand and deliver style of teaching with the blackboard and the students just sitting in rows listening is long gone. And it's the creative approach and individualized assessment, so that teachers really have all the tools they need to accommodate that vast array of learning experience with the kids come to school having already or not having already, I think is a continual focus in our district.
All right. Thank you. Our last question, we'll start with Marty. Regarding the cost of education, do you feel that the current budget for the school district is adequate? And if not, what changes do you think need to be made?
Well, I think the current budget is adequate. Hopefully, the current budget isn't going to be the same budget that we have to deal with for the next 10 years, as far as what our revenue is and so on. I think it's something that we constantly have to look at and evaluate. I think what I've seen of the district, you know, by and large, I think they're pretty good stewards of their financial resources. And I think it's something we need to continually have to talk about. You know, there's a little reference there, I think, probably to the vote that took place concerning the mill levy and its failure. I fully support the mill levy, I think, without being a name-calling on the other side. I think you have to be foolish in the long term to not support it. And I think, though, that somebody should have done a much better job in educating people. I had friends who were very pro-education, you know, and they'd either ask me how to vote or they voted no. And so, "Well, if they need more money, I'll let them get that next year." Or, "I don't like Davies and Blue STEM, so I'm not going to vote for it." I mean, they have nothing to do with the vote. If you don't like those things, get rid of the board members, nothing personal, that had something to do with them, you know? So I guess my response is, I think our budget is fine where it's at. I think, though, we have to continually footage education at a fair thing. And I think eventually, this mill levy will need to get passed if we're going to maintain the level of education that we now do have. Thank you.
Thank you. To Tyler.
I believe the current budget level is, if not appropriate, then maybe a little underfunded for the current direction we want to take our Fargo Public Schools. Specifically, I want to address the mill levy vote that just recently happened, because this also kind of aligns itself quite well, actually, with one of the platforms that I'm running on, and that is the level of engagement and communication between the board itself and the public at large. You know, it was mentioned already that people were very, the level of communication to them was very inadequate. They really didn't know one where the other, how to vote, what the issue really was dealing with specifically, what a no vote meant, what a yes vote meant. And this is something that, as a board member, I think it's our responsibility to reach out to the public and explain in detail exactly what needs to happen in order to give the appropriate level of funding to our students, because they are the ones that we are caretakers of, not just the school buildings itself. They are our priority. One way to possibly get around the mill levy situation that I've thought of is, in order to get away from a structure that's completely based off of, on the backs of property owners, is to maybe leverage a small sales tax to supplement the current level of education funding within the school Fargo, within the district of Fargo. This is something that makes sure that everyone has some skin in the game. It should also go a long ways to engaging more people, because, you know, if people have some level of monetary interest in the system at that point, they should, it should follow, have a little more interest in exactly what's going on in the district itself. And that is my answer. Thanks.
Thank you. To Linda.
I welcome everybody's participation in helping get the word out on this. It was, as you can imagine, not only a difficult message to convey, this has been mandated by the legislature that we needed to go to the voters for reauthorization of our mill levy. We were currently at a cap of 170. We said, "Lower us to 150, that'll be fine." We're at 139 right now. As the saying goes, when you're explaining, you're losing. And it was extremely difficult. I would say that the school board members did everything that they were legally able to do to get the word out. There are certain constrictions that as an elected official, you can't do. You cannot advocate for a position. You can do everything you can to educate about an issue, which is what we absolutely did to the best of our abilities to making sure that information was on the website. We went to every school, every PTA, service clubs. It's difficult. You're relying on a media to, I mean, besides the paid ads that we took out that tried to explain the issue and drive people to resources for more information, you're, and if you've ever been in the news, you absolutely know this, you have no control over how the media will choose to present an issue. I think for the most part, it was factual information that was out there, but that wasn't always the case. And there was some intentional misinformation that, you know, it's hard to scramble after. So I think going forward, clearly, the Fargo Public School District needs at least its current level of mill levy, 139. I think we'd all probably be comfortable with a cap at that point. But freezing of the dollars going forward, we will not have the school district we have now in 10, 15, 20 years if that happens. So I welcome anyone and everyone onto this team to make sure that our population, our citizens, understand this the best they can and that we do all we can going forward.
All right. To Ahmed.
I was driving the other day and I saw a bumper sticker on a car in front of me that says, "I will know we have our, we finally have our priorities straight when schools have all the money they need and the military needs a bake sale to buy a new tank." I think this really sums it up very well. I was doing, you know, I looked it up. At this point in time, our funding per student in the Fargo School District is at 47 percent, at the 47th percentile of the national funding levels per student nationwide. Our cost of living is at the 49th percentile, which means that the two are approximately the same, if not, if anything, the funding is slightly less than the cost of living factor, which makes us, you know, we cannot make the claim that our schools are overfunded. So we certainly, if we allow it to drop, like the issue of maintaining the current dollar level rather than a percentile, we will end up dropping, which is not in anybody's interest. We have to maintain adequate funding levels for, to maintain the necessary education for our children and to maintain the quality of life and the desirability of the community as a whole. So as far as the specifics of the mill levy, of course, like everybody else hashed it out, the biggest problem is that people either didn't know that the vote is happening or didn't know what it means or didn't, you know, there was a lot of, and I'm not sure why, but that's the reality of what happened. We need to be more proactive about it in the future. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So we will wrap up now with the one-minute closing statements, and we will start with Tyler John Anderson.
Again, I'd like to thank everybody for showing up here today. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for setting this up, and thank you to those of you listening again or tuning in later on TV. I think I've done a fairly appropriate job of giving you kind of the platform that I intend to run on here for the Board of Education. I wish to get out my website's information again, just to help those of you who may be interested in engaging me a little bit more after this. That's going to be Tyler John Anderson for Fargo Public Schools on Facebook. Feel free to please ask me any question. I'm more than willing to engage you in further debate or discussion on any of the very important issues that deal with our schools and our students going forward. Again, some of the main priorities, which I believe that I am fully qualified to help the school of Fargo and the schools, well, the schools of Fargo within the Fargo School District, if I would be elected to the board, or would be financial or fiscal management, communications out to the public at large, and just making sure that our students have the best schools going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. To Linda Boyd.
Thank you. Thank you again to the League of Women Voters and everyone who is watching, but thank you also to my fellow candidates here and in the previous session. To me, it is an incredible testament to how passionate people of Fargo are, that there are 11 school board candidates running for office. I think that's fantastic. Anyone you talk to, I mean, we discovered through the course-
Anyone you talk to, I mean, we discovered through the course of the long-range facility planning, community engagement sessions that we did for many months and all over town and in various schools, is that Fargo is absolutely passionate about its schools and passionate about quality and excellence and an equitable opportunity for all students, and they feel passionately about their own schools and their own neighborhoods. And it's been a real pleasure to serve. I hope I have the opportunity to serve again and will pledge to be as focused on moving forward in a progressive but responsible way as we have been.
Thank you. To Ahmed Camel.
Thank you. I like everybody. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and thank you to the audience, whether they're here or at home, watching us on TV now or later. Over the last hour, I gave you an idea of what my issues that I'm passionate about are. But I want to stress it now that, you know, I've lived in this community for 15 years now. I feel, you know, I'm very passionate about the community, I want to give back. I feel I have expertise in the field of education. I have 20 years of experience in the higher educational field. I have an experience in management. I recently acquired an MBA degree. And then also, in addition to any other issues that I'm currently passionate about, it's inevitable that the school board will face issues that none of us is familiar with. There will be something that comes up. As a researcher, that's, I've made the lifelong commitment to being able to research issues and find what are the different points of view, so that I can make an informed decision at that time, depending on the circumstances of the situations that will arise. So, thank you, everyone, and I will look forward to serving you on the school board by having your votes on June 10th.
And thank you. And to Marty, living good.
I'd like to thank everybody for the opportunity to talk a little bit about our issues. I'm going to try not to be too ego-driven, my kids will cringe when they hear that, but I do honestly think I'm kind of the complete package as far as what you need in a school board member. I've had children go through the school. I have children in high school. I have children in elementary school. I know what's going on. I have a teaching background. I have a master's in education. I've worked for the last 25 years in the education industry, in curriculum and in technology, which is very important, but I wouldn't say it's a cornerstone. I think the teachers are our cornerstone of things. But I'm very familiar with the goings-on in education. I know about the trends. I've managed large budgets. I know what questions to ask. So, I am somebody who's going to look out always for the best interests of our students. I'm going to ask questions. I do a lot of question-asking. And I'm going to listen to what people say. I'm going to be fiscally responsible and make sure we're making the most efficient use of the resources available. I'm going to be open for discussion and for people to come to and talk about the education thing. So, thank you again for your time. I would appreciate your vote.
All right, thank you. Just to wrap up today, the League of Women Voters of the Red River Valley would like to thank everyone that attended, both the candidates and the people that came to the forum, and also those that are watching on TV. We'd like to thank the city of Fargo for allowing us to use the city hall chambers. And we'd also like to let everyone know that anyone interested in learning more about the League of Women Voters of the Red River Valley can learn more on our website or Facebook page. The primary election is going to be June 10th. And as a final reminder, that the voter ID regulations are in place, that anyone wanting to vote will need a state-issued ID. And then finally, just a thank you to the candidates for sharing their time and helping to educate the citizens of Fargo.